Good morning. I'll call this morning's meeting to order. We are missing Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Haney today for prior obligations, but we do have a quorum and can conduct business. Looking for an approval of the agenda. We do have one agenda addition, the request to change the starting time to 9:30 for next week's commissioners' meeting.
We approve with the change.
We have a motion to approve with the change. I think to note the reason we're doing that is...
I met with Joe Razzo from the Greater Fargo-Morden Economic Development Organization last week, and there's going to be a meeting on the 23rd where the Department of Economic Development Executive Director is going to be in Morehead, and this will allow the opportunity for our board members to participate in that meeting.
Okay.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve for the approval of the agenda. Any further discussions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Citizens to be heard. Is there anyone wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Approval of the minutes from October 2nd.
So move.
The motion by Commissioner Wayland.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. We'll do the agenda addition really quick, which was that changing of the start time for next week.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Wayland. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you. Item number two is our annual state auditor's report. Our state auditor, Bob Johnson. Good morning. Come on up.
Good morning. Thank you. Before we get started, the first thing that I just wanted to mention is that Clay County has a wonderful staff to work with. They do a really great job in preparing their financial statements and preparing for the audit, so I just wanted to make sure that it was noted that it's really appreciated from the office of the State Auditor's Office that they do such a great job.
We appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
I'm going to start out by going through some financial information first. I'll try and be brief here. I know I'm on the agenda for a very short period of time here. There's a lot of information to cover, but I'll go through that first, and then we'll go through the schedule of findings and investment costs, and just point out the few findings that Clay County does have. I've provided several handouts. They should be in your board packet. I'll start out with handout number one. We have a lot of financial information on that handout. The very first part I'll talk about a little bit is government-wide financial information, and that's at the very top of your handout. The total net position for Clay County at December 31st, 2017 is $107,233,000. That's down about $1,791,000 from the previous year. We're about 1.64 percent. The main reason for the decrease is a decrease in net investment and capital assets. You purchased a large number of capital assets. Net investment in capital assets decreased by $1,999,000. For the governmental activities, capital assets actually increased by about $21,000, almost $22 million, but the debt related to those capital assets went up about $24,000, almost $25 million, resulting in a net decrease in investment in capital assets of $2,784,000. For your business-type activities, the capital assets increased $765,000, and the debt related to those capital assets went down about $219,000, which resulted in a net increase in net investment in capital assets of $984,000. Restricting net position went up about $601,000. For governmental activities, the restricted increased about $418,000, and that's mainly due to an increase in restricted for highways and streets of about $464,000. An increase in debt service of about $157,000. Excuse me, I'm getting back up. It was an increase in conservation of natural resources of about $120,000, and that was offset by a decrease in restricted for debt service of $157,000. The business type increased about $182,000, and that was mainly due to an increase in restricted for land foreclosure, post-closure costs. Unrestricted went down $593,000. That's kind of the net effect of everything, and there's so many variables put into that, but it's kind of the net effect. You're shifting some of your unrestricted into restricted, and you've also tied up some in capital assets and those types of things. At the fund level, the State Auditor's Office recommends that you have a cash balance in your general fund to sustain about six months of operation. In your case, the cash balance of December 31st, 2017 was $8,922,000, and that would cover about 4.7 months of operation. Your Roden Bridge Fund had a cash balance of $6,320,000. That would cover about 10 months of operations for that fund. And the Social Service Fund had a cash balance of $6,868,000, and that would cover about 3.9 months of operation. The OSA's concern is mainly with the general fund because the general fund, you rely so much on levy that there's that timeframe where you have to have enough cash to sustain operations. The other funds, you do have a steady inflow of cash, so we're not as concerned about those funds. For fund balance, I'm just going to kind of run through the total fund balance and unrestricted fund balance in our recommendations as the State Auditor's Office. Your total fund balance for the general fund at December 31st, 2017 is $9,841,000. The unrestricted is $6,826,000. Now, the Office of the State Auditor recommends you have enough unrestricted fund balance to sustain five months of operation or expenditures and fall somewhere between 35 and 50 percent of operating revenues. For your general fund, that is 3.6 months' worth of expenditures, and you have about 29 percent of your operating revenues. The Roden Bridge Fund had a total fund balance of $5,391,000. Your unrestricted fund balance was $4,025,000, and that would cover about 6.5 months of expenditures and 33.97 percent of your operating income. Social Service Fund had a total fund balance of $7,033,000. The unrestricted was $6,873,000. That would cover about 3.9 months of expenditures and is 31.67 percent of your operating revenues. Now, the recommendation is really on the general fund and all special revenue funds combined. In that case, your unrestricted fund balance for the general fund and all special revenue funds combined is $17,810,000. You have enough of unrestricted fund balance to cover 2.66 months of expenditures and about 31 percent of operating revenues. Any questions on that? I know it's a lot of information, and I just kind of threw it out there fast.
Questions?
Okay. Then move on. I've provided some graphs, and they provide a little bit of history. You've got the numbers up above and the graphs down below. It's five years' worth of information. The first one relates to revenues, and there's only a couple of things I'm going to point out on that is that your revenues, your basic revenues, and this is typical of all the counties that I deal with anyway, is that the majority of the revenues come in in the form of taxes and in the governmental revenues. Looking at the graphs, your taxes have increased slightly each year for the last five years, and that's a good trend. I mean, that's what I think the taxpayers like. They don't like large jumps in tax increases and things like that. And your intergovernmental revenue is kind of on the same trend. It's just been kind of a steady increase over the last five years. And then I'll kind of flip to the expenditures. Obviously, expenditures go up every year, too, so it's good that you're kind of planning ahead and keeping your tax revenues and intergovernmental revenues kind of at a steady increase to cover the increases in expenditures. On handout number three, as you can see, your expenditures, the categories are general government, public safety, highways and streets, human services. Those are the main categories, and that's the categories that I see in most of my counties as the main categories. For 2017, you had a large, large increase in capital outlay. That's all your new construction projects, those types of things, and your debt has gone up a little bit in the last five years each year. General government, if you compare the cost of general government between 2017 and '13, it's gone up about $463,000 over that period of time. Public safety has gone up about $2,677,000. Highways and streets has gone down, $6,418,000 over that period of time, and that was planned. I know the board has planned that, and human services went up about $4,296,000 over that period of time.
Bob, that public safety one, that had to do primarily with our having to transport inmates out of county?
Well, I think that had a, certainly had an impact on it, yes.
But I think that was 1.39 of it or something.
Yeah. I can't recite the number right off the top of my head, but that does have an impact on it. Okay. I'm going to move on. The next three handouts are just relating to total fund balance and unrestricted fund balance for the major funds, for the three major funds that we've been discussing. In the general fund, again, providing the graphs, but in general, total fund balance and unrestricted fund balance over the five-year period have gone up. If you look at the unrestricted, you've gone up about $1,409,000 from what it was in 2013. Total fund balance has gone up about $1,752,000. And looking at the graphs, you can see in 2014, it went up some, '15 went down some, '16 went up, some '17 went down, but the overall trend has been a slight increase in both total fund balance and unrestricted fund balance over the five-year period. I'm on handout number five now, and that's the Roden Bridge Fund. Again, you can look at the graph, and you can see trends just real apparent there. Back in 2013, I can't remember if it was turnback money or advance money, but you received a lot of funding for specific projects that was restricted. So if you look at the trends, you'll see your total fund balance declining in 2014, '15, and '16. It's come back up again in '17 a bit, but your unrestricted fund balance was a deficit back in 2013, and that has increased essentially every year since 2017. At December 31st, 2017, your unrestricted was $4,025,000. That's up about $4,515,000 from what it was in 2013. Your total fund balance is down about $2,887,000 from what it was in 2013.
That was due to the, where we bonded for projects.
I think that was probably part of it, too, yes. Okay. The social service fund, the human service fund, the total fund balance, that is actually, in 2014, it bounced up some, '15 and '16, both total, and unrestricted, it comes down. They're up a little bit in 2017. Your total and unrestricted over the five-year period are down a little bit. Unrestricted is down about $438,000 from what it was in 2013, and your total fund balance is down about $358,000 from what it was in 2013. Any questions on the finances or...
Questions?
And just for the awareness, we went through this in a...
In a field exit a couple of weeks ago.
In a field exit, so some of my questions, I had questions, but they were answered, so.
Right.
Just to...
Both Commissioner Campbell and I were at the table.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'm going to move on to the schedule of findings and question costs. You had a single audit for 2017 because you received over $750,000 worth of federal funds. The first page of that schedule is a summary page that when your report goes into the federal clearinghouse, they can look at that page, and they know a lot about Clay County's audit just from that one page. First of all, we gave you an unrefined opinion on your financial statements. That's the clean opinion. That's the one that you want. As far as findings on internal controls, we have no material weaknesses that we noted. We did have what we call significant deficiency. That's a reportable finding. There was no issues related to noncompliance material to the financial statements noted. For your federal award programs, we have two findings. One of them is a material weakness that we have considered a material weakness. One's a significant deficiency or a reportable item. For your report on your major federal award program, we did qualify it for the eligibility testing for your MA program. Any audit findings disclosed are required to be reported in accordance with 2 CFR 251 or 516A. Yes, we did have findings, so those were required to be reported as compliance findings. And the major program that we tested this year was the Medicaid Cluster Programs, and you were considered a lower status for your federal award programs for 2017. The first item recorded is a financial item. It's dealing with segregation of duties. This is a very common finding that we have. What we're talking about on segregation of duties is you've got a number of small fee offices that collect money. There's limited staff in those fee offices, so it's generally one person collecting money, recording the money until they accumulate a certain amount. Then they bring it over to the county treasurer's office, and it gets properly reseated, so the record-keeping and the custody function between the treasurer and the auditor's office is in place at that point. We just point it out each year because, generally speaking, those small fee offices is where we end up finding frauds because of the lack of segregation of duties. Are the amounts large? Usually not, but it's just one of those things that we want to make sure the counties are aware of, that with the lack of segregation of duties, there's a higher risk that things can happen in those small departments. I'm going to move into findings under federal award programs. The first one is dealing with eligibility testing, and it's for the Medicaid Cluster Program, CFDA number 93.778. When we did our testing for the Medicaid Cluster Program, we noted that a lot of the documentation within the case files and MAXIS system weren't matching up, or there was lack of documentation, or certain things just didn't jive. We had 12 instances in which bank accounts were not input correctly into the MAXIS system or the accounts were not verified, which is a compliance requirement. One instance of a vehicle not inputted into MAXIS. Three of burial accounts not verified or not input into MAXIS. There was one instance of mortgage obligation documented in the case file, but no homes were listed in the case file or in MAXIS. We had one instance of life insurance policy that was not verified or not input into the MAXIS system, and one instance in which social security income was not correctly entered into the MAXIS system. This is really kind of a documentation finding. I mean, we have compliance issue because the documentation didn't match up or was missing, but it's mainly a documentation thing to make sure that the documentation on the applications are matching what's in the case files and also match the MAXIS system. Any questions related to that?
If I can, you know, we had our Health and Human Services Department there and discussed this, and I think part of when you find these things, we look for an action plan to...
Yep.
And we've been assured by our supervisors within that department that an action plan will be presented, and those things will be corrected, so. And probably a better procedure in the future for maybe comparing the two sources.
Yes. And Clay County does do periodic case reviews, and they have been doing those case reviews, which is a good control, and I guess we're just, for some reason, some of the documentation is missing, and I know in some cases it doesn't have an impact or a major impact on eligibility, but all that documentation still has to match, so. Okay? The next item is an item that kind of came about in recent years because there was a change in some of the requirements for the federal regulations, and this is dealing with procurement, suspension, and department. Again, it was the Medicaid Cluster Program. All nonfederal entities must follow the federal guidelines for verifying department, suspension, and exclusions as provided entitled to U.S. federal regulations. We noted that when we tested for procurement for this program, and we've tested procurement for highway projects and things like that in the past, and the documentation's all been there, but the federal, with the new federal regulations, any purchases over $25,000 threshold, there has to be verification that the county performed a search of the vendors, whether they're debarred, suspended, or otherwise excluded. In this case, we just cannot find any documentation supporting that that was done. Again, as Kevin had mentioned, they, you know, the county has provided a corrective action plan, and now they are aware that they should be out looking at the Minnesota Department of Administration's Suspended Debarred Vendor Report and the Federal System Award Management Site, which is the SAM site. I think it was just a thing that with the new requirements that came out, a lot of our counties have been missing it, and so we're pointing it out, so going forward.
And that source that you just mentioned, that's updated weekly, I think you said to us, didn't you?
Yes, it's updated. I think the SAM site is actually updated daily, if I'm not mistaken, but it's updated very often anyway, so. And then last year, we had an item that we reported. It was dealing with publishing itemized claims, and the county has corrected that, so that all looks very well. Very good now. And that's all I have to present. Any questions?
Thank you, Bob. Questions?
Any other questions?
I want to follow up with a comment, and I, and this goes to our staff, and that is that, you know, these areas, these are technical terms that they're called in terms of material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. The terminology can sometimes sound way worse than...
I think significant deficiency sounds worse than a reportable item.
Right, right. And it doesn't, it doesn't mean that anybody got something that they shouldn't have or anything like that. It just, it just means that documents didn't match.
Yeah, it means documents didn't match, and because documents didn't match, we could not tell for sure.
Right.
That you're in compliance, so.
And not that this is your area, but we did ask the questions. Because of these deficiencies, would that have changed the eligibility? And the vast majority of that was no, that no, it just was something that, you know, unfortunately got missed, and it won't get missed in the future, but that should be noted as well.
Great.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, as always. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number three is a request to fill the vacancy for the Social Services Supervisor in Adult Services. Good morning, Director.
Well, Pat Boyer is retiring. She's been with us for 34 years, and she's been the supervisor in our adult services, mental health, chemical health, adult protection. So we were really sad to get her notice, but obviously happy for her. So well-deserved retirement. So I really just wanted to get this on the board agenda right away to be able to move forward. We really could not operate without replacing that position. I did provide in the board packet our current organizational structure and where her unit falls and the programs that she supervises. We would intend to post internally as well as request the merit list for any eligible candidates, and then would request the ability to backfill if there was any internal promotions that occurred as a result of filling her position. We will not see, her last working day would be the end of January with utilizing her vacation time into February. The wage analysis in terms of payout with her longevity with us, we won't see any budget savings for 2019, but then going forward, we would like to see a budget savings into future years, but... So I am requesting the ability to replace her position.
Move, Grace.
There's a motion to approve the request. Commissioner Wayland, does that include backfill?
Yes.
With the opportunity to backfill if needed?
I would second the motion.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Discussion?
I just, I just look at these lists of things that she oversees, and I'll tell you what, it's, a lot of them are the things that are at the heart of what we're struggling with in our communities today with the adult mental health and chemical dependency and, you know, and her, her knowledge in that is going to be, I hope we can somehow utilize her expertise still after she's retired.
Well, I've already planted some seeds. I'm cautious about that, but...
Yeah, well, I mean, that, that knowledge there is...
Yeah, the institutional knowledge, and she, she is one supervisor that's been very engaged in community committees and work region-wide, and again, with 34 years being with Clay County and her work, be a lot of institutional knowledge lost with her retirement.
But she's planted some great things in the programs that she's worked with.
Yes.
She was very instrumental in discussions with our behavioral health unit, and we appreciate that, and so, well, we'll miss her. She's done great work for us as a foundation. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a request for approval for the 2019 to 2021 MOA between Clay County and the U of M. Ben Anderson, good morning.
Good morning. So our current agreement between the university and Clay County for three university extension employees here expires at the end of this year, so this is just what you have is the new agreement for the next three years, 2019 through 2021, and these would be for Randy Nelson, our agriculture and horticulture educator, and our two 4-H program coordinators, Mitzi Marlin and Lisa Kassenbauer. The changes from, that are reflected in here, it's a 2.2 percent increase in the rates for 2019, and then 2 percent for each of 2020 and 2021. These rates are, these increases are among the lowest in recent years from the changes that we've had over time, and they are also either lower or equal to the changes that we had in 2016 through 2018. Those ranged from 2 percent to 2.5 percent in changes. And then the other thing I'll note is the line underneath the table in the Table A in the agreement, it talks about the $10,000 in grant funding that we put towards Lisa's 4-H program coordinator position. There's two years left in that funding, and we are putting another request into that grant source to get that again. Yep.
You've done some good work with that grant.
Absolutely, yeah. Not only with the staff, but with the programming as well. So that, but that process just doesn't align with, with this, but...
And Glendon Farms, correct, is the one that did the prior...
Yep, the Grant family, yep.
Okay. Well, as a, the member of the Extension Committee, both Commissioner Gross and I are on this, and this is not something that has changed. We've known about this for a while. I believe that the last AMC in December is when they...
Yep.
They finalized this, so this is not surprising to me, and the work that you do with that allotment is substantial, so thank you.
Thank you.
I certainly think it's reasonable and, you know, it's evident, I've seen the evidence that it continues to grow in terms of 4-H and extension services, so I...
evidence that it continues to grow in terms of 4-H and extension services, so I would move approval of the contract.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Campbell.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wayland. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify with a same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you, Ben. Item number five is our request for approval for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Good morning, Lieutenant Green.
Good morning. I think you've got a little packet there. We did get the, received the Clay County, we received the emergency management grant for a month of $34,361 for this year, 2018. I guess what I'm looking for is approval of the grant, to accept the grant and then the signature of the chairman of the board and then the Clay County Administrator on behalf of Clay County.
Okay.
Pretty clear. Cut.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Wayland.
I'll second it. And this, this did not have a matching?
Yes, we have to match that.
Okay.
Yes.
And that's not listed here, so where does, where does that come from?
My budget.
Okay.
We, but, we, the match is always in my budget every year, so.
So the second was by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify with a same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, the request for approval for the final contract voucher for County Road 57. Our engineer, David Overbow, and our assistant, Eric. Good morning.
Morning. Yeah, this is a rather quick item. This would be our final voucher for County Road 57 Bridge. It's now complete. The contractor was Garrett Hanson Contracting from Blackduck. Everything went great out there. He did it, started in the, in the wintertime, went over the one season, finished up in the springtime. The, the local township officials, they were all happy with how that all worked out and it's good to get that thing fixed up. It did have a little, a little slight alignment change to it. It's real close to the South Branch of the Buffalo River and, yeah, it's a deficiency now that shouldn't impact any farming, should aid things, so. Our original contract was a little over $450,000. This came in at $434,210.70. When you do these bridges, you design them for a certain depth of piling based on a SOE's report and you don't always need that much test piling, so what they do is they pound it in there until it reaches bearing or basically in 10 blows, it moves about this far and then you know you hit bedrock down there, so this was a little bit under on the piling, so the contract is a little cheaper than our original, so.
We can appreciate that.
Yeah.
Slightly less is better than slightly more, so that's for sure. So I'll move to approve.
Commissioner Wayland approves the request for the final voucher. And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify with a same eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes. Thank you. I do have a question for you. I've noticed that County Road 8, the eastbound lane, is starting to sink quite bad in those, those wheel or tire tra, or tire lanes. And I did notice there's a, you have a sign out there, but it's, it's kind of dangerous and as soon as those beat trucks start going again this weekend, if they can dry out, that might be a problem.
Sure.
Do you know what I'm talking about? It's driving towards the river. It's about a mile west of County Road 11.
Okay. You know, I think, I think we did get some calls on that too. It's right in the edge of the lane and the shoulder a little bit.
Yeah, it's right on the edge, but I mean, it's sunk pretty good now and there's...
Sure. Well, Eric and I'll take a look at it. Our new maintenance farming should start on Monday, which would be nice to get another guy on, on hand, but we'll reach out to our current...
I know you're in transition, so...
Yeah, our current lead guy and we'll see if there's something they can plan on, maybe getting some catch material in there more so than just a sign.
Okay, and the other comment I have that I got from a resident that, the downer road, that you had fixed something going into their driveway and they appreciated the fast response. Thanks for that.
Yeah, I think that was just a little hiccup that maybe happened with our paving project and Eric said the contractor went back out. I believe that's probably the one right by the interstate there.
Yep, yep.
They heated it up and smoothed it out a little bit, so it wasn't so rough, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Couple of issues, Dave and Eric. The first one is, have we heard any more on that study on the County Road 3, the structure?
So here's where we're at with that. Well, we, you know, we hired Ron to go out there and do the testing on it and I know we just, we just paid the bill, so the work has been done and I'm assuming we'll get the report. It's probably not going to be for another month or so till we get that report on that, so.
Okay, and how, what all did they test? Did they concentrate on the south end or was it the whole?
I think the whole, the whole works between 22 and 18.
18?
Yep.
Okay. And then on that same line, I, I've been out visiting with some of the neighbors there and there's this ongoing concern about the speed limits on 3, especially since the park has been established more. And I, it's been a while since there's been a speed study done there.
What is it at?
It's going right out, it's straight out north between...
I think it starts at 40, goes to 55, back to 40.
Yeah, there's a mile and a half stretch in there. That's, that's 55 and it, you know...
There is a new traffic engineer at Mendat now. I think since I've been here, we've at least asked for studies twice, if not three times, so it's hard, it's hard to keep going back to them and asking for speed studies, but...
But it, it might be hard, but when, if you take a look at what's happened with Johnson Park and the development there and the amount of traffic that's there now and the use of that for the track meets and all those things that go on, 55 miles an hour in some of those areas and lead, just leading up to it is...
Sure.
I think it's worth a study and we should put in a request.
Okay.
To do it again. Thank you.
Anything else? All right.
I know the, you may or may not have gotten a lot of calls since last week. I'm sure you probably have the, I don't know, in the 18 years I've been here, I don't know that the roads have ever had this tough of a stretch of time, this time of year and...
Yeah.
And I, and did you see the email I sent to my, to my guys? Tried to tell my guys that, you know, we're out there for public safety. We're going to have to help out, you know. I realize we ask for help from the local growers to do what they can, but in the event that there's a lot of mud on the road, we're going to have to be there and I told them, plan for working weekends, plan for maybe working a little longer days if you need to, whatever we need to do. We don't have that much weather until it completely freezes up, so I think we got to do our best out there and I try to...
Well, I, I think because there's been so much moisture and that farmers haven't been able to get in, as soon as they're going to get in, it's going to be crazy. And so I think, you know, if it takes a little extra time to make sure that those roads are shaped up before it freezes, I think it's going to save us in the long run. Otherwise, we're going to be hurting.
Yeah, there's potential for some really ugly situations here in the next two to three weeks.
Yeah. It's the game you play, but I get it. Anything else? Thank you. Item number seven is our committee reports. Commissioner Campbell?
Okay, I, the only meetings that I...
We voted on that last one, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The meetings that I had to report, it's just the ones that I had yesterday and in the morning, we had the juvenile center construction meeting and the things to note from that one is that by mid-November, they will be ready for the move-in of the furniture for the admin area for Phase 1, so that, that part will be pretty much ready to go. Work is happening right now. Obviously, there's other construction stuff going on too, but they, they're, they're starting to work on the gymnasium right now and that's going to go on over the course of three weeks. The gymnasium will be shut down for about a week where it will not be able to be used, but we have been told that they've worked with the Department of Corrections and found alternative ways to get their activities in. In the afternoon, yesterday, we had our Correctional Facility Law Enforcement Center update and again, the primary focus this week is, is the big week for, is tomorrow, now they're doing a lot of training tomorrow. Tomorrow, they have the first sweep of the facility to go through it all and on Thursday, from 4:00 to 10:00, there's going to be approximately 100 people in there, spending a few hours in there to test the system out and, and see what the new jail is like. And then on Friday, after that's done, of course, because public's been in there, they have to do another complete sweep of the facility on Friday and starting Monday morning at 8 o'clock, they're going to be taking prisoners over about three at a time over to the new facility, start using that facility, so.
There was some news coverage on TV about it last night, so.
Yeah, they, we had a, we had a tour yesterday and then the media was offered to come there and see it one last time, so. Oh, unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wayland?
Let's see, I had a EDC Executive Committee meeting. We just had some general updates from the staff and still some more discussion on the Fueling the Future venture that we're dealing with with the Chamber of Commerce. I had a, Commissioner Haney and I had a Northwest Regional Radio Board meeting and the big thing we completed there was the agreement between the Radio Board and Cass County, North Dakota, to install and set up the ARMOUR system, which is the same emergency radio system Minnesota uses, the 800 megahertz system. So that was good to get finalized and accomplished and, and let's see, oh, I had East Grand Forks yesterday, Area Agency on Aging Land of the Dancing Sky and this time of year mainly discussions on funding for next year and the budget and that type of thing. That was it for me.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the buffer meeting that we had at Soylent Water. Basic discussion was that we're about 96% compliant for the public waters and about 59% compliant on those public ditches. The majority of them are in the wild rice area up north and so, that we're continuing to work on. So a large part of the discussion really talked about where we go from here, who's, how are we going to use the county enforcement dollars? And I think we have a pretty good discussion on, on that. It's going to, hopefully, we can continue to get that money from the state, but as we all see, sometimes those mandated things, the funding streams disappear. So in the meantime, we're able to kind of get some good ideas for what we want to use that for. So I think we have another meeting coming up that we'll talk about that. And I had some discussion, I think with Steve, about planning and zoning those tech positions, those applications, so I just wanted to double check that. It's been a while since those applications have come in. Have we reached out to them to say that we've hired a director? We want a director to be part of it?
We have, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. All right, and besides the county attorney issue, discussions that I had with Steve, that concludes my report. So Steve?
Again, Wednesday, I also attended the Soylent Water Buffer Enforcement Meeting. Commissioner Wayland was touched on that. I also that day participated in Veterans Court Graduation. I think that was a, for those of you who've attended, it's a very, it's a very neat experience to have someone share, share their success there and it's a, a great, a great program here. That afternoon, I met with the Historical Society in the city of Moorhead in, in discussion of contract extension for the Historical Society. On Thursday, I met with Shelley Jeffers in regards of a contract coming forward for the, the children in need of protective services here in the near future. That evening, I attended the Watershed District Board meeting. On Friday, I mentioned earlier, I met with Joe Rosso and Sammy Rowe from the Greater Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development. We're having some further meetings involving Lori Johnson and also at that time point, they had invited us to the Driving the Global Business Development Strategies that we're going to be attending and if we can make sure that we have in our records, we have open meeting for that. Great.
Are we supposed to...
Yes, I have a list for it.
On Monday, we met with Ben Anderson here from Regional Extension, participated in the owners' meeting for the Juvenile, Juvenile Center, which I'm sure Campbell spoke about. Also talked, participated in the, the owners' meeting. I do think that, just a note, the certificate of substantial completion was moved from, from September to October. That's important just from the warranty standpoint and gave us an additional month. So I participated in the jail tours. Also, I had a meeting that afternoon with Ron Porter, Pat Boyer, Kathy McCain Brown, who's on a potential grant opportunity, and also had a meeting with Pam Foss yesterday afternoon. That meeting particularly focused on the city of Moorhead. As you know, we've been having discussions here. We've been providing services for prosecutorial services for the city for the last 17 years. For the last three, we've been operating without a contract. We spent the better part of the last three years trying to, to agree on a new contract, extended contract and haven't been able to do so. We've provided the city of Moorhead notice that in the event that we were unable to come to a, to any kind of agreement by October 15th, we would be putting them on notice. We did receive, did receive feedback from the city of Moorhead yesterday. Basically, in a nutshell, what they would prefer to do is to sign a one-year contract, continue at the same terms that we are currently under, which would not provide us any additional, any additional staff. And that was, that's kind of the point of, of our concern at this point. The, the city council has not met for a number of weeks. In the event that we would stick to, stick to our, our initial contract request, the city would be, would be willing to go to a one-year contract and discuss the addition of a one, of a one-year, an additional staff for one year, but that would have to go to city council next week, so.
Commissioner Wayland?
Well, I'm personally not interested in a one-year agreement. You know, that could, has the potential to cause significant staffing issues and budget issues for the county, so, you know, after 17 years, they should be agreeable to, you know, a long-term, longer-term contract and I guess if they're not, at this point, it should have been resolved by now, but I guess I would be willing to extend their deadline to November 15th to give us a final answer and should they choose not to, you know, sign a multi-year agreement, you know, on the services, then I, I think we would, you know, end our services to the city on, you know, December, or January 31st of 2019 and I think that's an adequate amount of time and, and then I, I think we talked about this in the past, but I think you should, you know, have a meeting in the very near future with the, the judges involved in this so they know what the status of this situation is, so.
I, I agree. Unfortunately, we tried to get this resolved before our budgets were set for the year and I appreciate the, the work of our county attorney's office and your office for trying to get to the table and get it done. Because that didn't happen, it's, the reality is somebody needs to step up and, and because signing a one-year contract is basically the, the status quo, the reason we came to the table is those, those numbers weren't working for any party and so I agree, I'd be willing to go to November 15th because this is a big deal. I mean, this really, there are consequences if this doesn't work out. I think the collaboration is important. There are small cities also at play and so hopefully, the city council can take an action by the 15th, but I agree to see services by the 31st. And I just want to clarify, did you say December 31st or January 31st?
January 31st, 2019.
Commissioner Campbell, do you?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I don't understand the offer here. The offer is to sign a one-year contract to keep the, the way things have been with no contract for the last three years? Am I understanding that correctly? So in other words, we would be looking at a, a, another extension of a no contract is what our offer is to us. And I, other than that they're willing to put that in writing, well, we might as well not sign a contract because nothing changes and, and, you know, I have to listen to our, our county attorneys that are coming to us and they're, they're the ones who are being able to show what, what the costs are and what the time is. We've said all along, we're not in this to make money, but we, we need to make sure that, you know, we, we are fairly compensated for what we do. And, you know, so whether you want to do November 5th, I, I certainly hope that, that we can iron out some sort of a longer-term agreement, you know, whether it's November 15th or December 15th, but, you know, I think the key date to me is the, is the January 31st date. I think we need to know something, you know, by then. And quite frankly, this, this could have an impact on what we've determined might be our final levy for 2019, which we have to do in December.
Right.
So, I, you know, I don't know, I'm certainly willing to support.
Which is exactly why I think we need a final answer from them by November 15th. I mean, we've been discussing this now for a number of months. And yesterday was the deadline and still don't have any, you know, what I consider a final answer from them, so.
And that's my concern is that I believe at the beginning of September, we said we needed to know by the middle of October so we could move forward budget-wise. And it, yes, yesterday was the 15th, but it's slightly rude that you submit that letter on the 15th at noon. And so, my concern is that we set it for December 15th, that we'll hear on December 15th. And we would like to know sooner than later, you know. Quite frankly, for me, I, they knew and they could have put it on a city council agenda and they haven't had a meeting for whatever reason. And so, you know, if it were up to me, I would say the beginning of November, but I think the 15th of November is fair. Commissioner Campbell?
Because of these uncertainties and the fact that we're running into critical decisions that we have to make in terms of our 2019 budget and levy, I would like to ask Pam, you know, if she could provide us something here for our own purposes. What, if there's no contract, I mean, what does that do to us in 2019 financially? And how would that impact us? I think we need to also know that to make a good decision. So, I'm kind of requesting Pam, if you could provide us with.
Yeah, I could do that.
Details, okay.
And I think too, the other part of it, we talked, I believe, at the board meeting last week is those small cities also have to make decisions for their next years. And we talked to, you know, Ms. Foss, I'm sorry, a little bit about drafting some sort of letter to start that conversation and motion too. To have that done in November would probably be best. Are we on the same page, everyone?
I don't think we need a motion.
No, no, I just want to make sure that we're on agree.
You got some direction there?
We have direction, yes, yep.
Thank you, all right.
I just had two other quick things. I just want to note that on November 6th, we're going to be having a public meeting for the solar and wind ordinance. That's part of our board meeting, and so that will be coming. We'll have that, make sure that that's advertised properly. At board last week, we did extend an offer to Hallie Duran to be our next planning and zoning director. She did accept, I just wanted to notify the board of that. And we'll be starting October 29th. I've talked with Ben Olson from Hometown Planning. He's done all the work on the solar and the wind ordinance. And so, I've asked him to stay through November 6th to participate in that public meeting. But then I'm looking for direction from the board if you'd like me to craft a letter notifying him that his services will no longer be needed after that point.
I think because, that's something that both he and you have had discussions regarding. I think we should have some sort of formal end to the contracted services. So, if we want to have it the 6th, you know, it's up to you what you feel is best. Hallie will have started by then.
She'll start on the 29th, so that'll be prior.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
Includes my report.
Do we have a meeting set for the highway department usage? Is that something between the city and?
We do not have a meeting yet at this point.
Okay.
The city did provide Dave Overbow with a letter looking to relook at the existing contract of the joint powers facility. But at this point, there hasn't been any discussion or any meeting set up.
You know, and it's up to you, I don't know if it would be helpful to have a commissioner at that table, but I think because we had commissioners quite active in setting up that agreement, I think that we should probably have a commissioner at one of those meetings. And, you know, I wasn't in those. And so, whoever I think would be a best fit, I don't know, Commissioner Campbell or Wayland are here. I don't want to volunteer them for something, but I think we need to have a commissioner representative there.
Whoever you designate, we'll make sure that that information is provided and when a meeting is set up.
Okay, all right, anything else? Steve, do you have anything?
No, you covered my one topic.
All right, well, thank you, we are adjourned.